We will call the order, the Wednesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, City of Solon Regular Civic Council Meeting. With that, we'll start the pledge.
For the flag, the United States of America. Two hundred and thirty-three, one, maybe then two. Indivisible, or liberty, and.
This for all.
Hello, Duncan, here, Martin, here, Gabriel, here, Kramer?
Here.
Whitehead.
Here.
Takes us to perfecting and approving the agenda. I did speak with Supervisor Sullivan earlier. He will not be able to join us tonight, but other than that, any other changes clear?
I live to perfect, elaborate the agenda.
A second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Our civility pledge, we pledge most civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and for meaning. That takes us to our citizen speak portion of the agenda. We have a few folks that have signed up to speak tonight. I'll start with Jill.
Jill.
Jill, Jill and all. I'll let Sarah introduce. I'm gonna warn everybody, I like to talk, so this is a misery time, I limit it to three minutes, because everyone likes to talk about what we do, but I'm gonna do my best, so. Well, thank you, everyone. My name is Jill Leaden, and I am founder and president of Solon Senior Support. Tonight, I am here to represent the senior groups of Solon. That would be the senior advocates, senior dining, senior transportation, senior support, and also representing the food pantry and the pickleball group, which is the Johnson County Pickleball Club. In a nutshell, our group started meeting monthly in August to discuss our missions, our challenges, and how we can best serve older adults in Solon. If you'd like to, on the brochures that we gave you, the black and orange one is our brochure of all the different senior services that have provided in Solon and in Los as well. Also in the packet is our student transportation brochure and our questionnaire that we sent out in August. And those are just having for you to keep in reference. I'm just gonna very briefly talk about the number of people that we serve in Solon. We have a monthly newsletter, some of you may receive it. We have a hundred mail copies roughly that we send out to people that don't have internet access. We also have two hundred and forty-three email subscribers. And again, that goes out monthly. I'd love to have all of you on our email list, so if you email me at solonseñors@gmail.com, I'd be happy to put you on the mailing list. Again, monthly newsletter tells about all the goings on in Solon that pertains to seniors. We have our senior advocates group who sponsors bus trips and restaurant runs. In August, for example, they had nineteen on the bus trip, twenty on the restaurant run. They also sponsor yearly immunization clinics, our senior speakers are voted blue shots if desired. Our senior dining, in August, we had ninety-five people that attended in-house and a hundred and twenty-one deliveries. So those are all people getting a warm meal that may not otherwise. For our senior transportation, Cindy is our coordinator, we did fifteen rides in August and twenty rides in September, and that number keeps going up every month. We are definitely looking for volunteers, if anyone would love to to serve that way. My group, Solon Senior Support, we actually collaborate with the library, wonderful program, and our cherry yoga, which meets twice a week. In August, there were a hundred and sixty-two participants in cherry yoga, but we average about twenty, which is pretty close to our cutoff. Twenty-five is our max. We also have coffee and conversation on Wednesdays, and that was ten by thirty-eight people. We do a Thursday coffee now at the community center in collaboration with the recreation department. And our number's probably about the twenties per month, but I think we're gonna see that increase as we have people walking available now besides coffee and conversation. On Fridays, we play Uger, and we have about twenty-two a month coming to that. We just started a free Friday meal, one Friday a month. We just have people come in, we order a meal from a local restaurant, and just have a good time. Our first one got twenty-one people involved. Other services, oops, am I?
We are with that. I know Cindy also wants to speak.
Yes. So she's, she's next, okay. If I can gather like thirty seconds with that meeting, okay?
I'll be quick.
She's, she's very fast, so I'll take a little bit. All of the above groups are nonprofit and are completely funded by grants and donations. The city at this time covers the senior dining manager salary and sixty dollars a month for cherry yoga. We'd love to work more closely with the city, getting involved in more programs, especially as maybe we work towards a new community center. We're very proud of the care activities and services that we provide for older adults, but we do need collaboration with the city, we think that we could do even better work. And Cindy will speak next about our.
Monday, Friday, Uger, where we have a Friday.
We got the truth, rough group. Better know how to play. Friday at the church, and you're talking, and we have snacks at two o'clock, so get there early, twelve-thirty.
So I want to talk a little bit about what we're, what we need as a group. We need a space for seniors to gather. Currently, we're using the library, the community center, the Methodist Church, and the Family Life Center. So it'd be really nice if we could have one place that we could call our own, and the seniors could congregate. We need money for insurance involved for transportation and volunteers. This is a thousand dollars a year, and it is, in addition, or I guess, what would you call that? More of a backup insurance for people that are driving for transportation and for volunteers. And money for senior fitness, we are currently working with the rec center to start classes in January, and we're gonna just start out by having once a week and see how that works. Then we would be paying fifty dollars to the instructor for once a week. Hopefully, we can increase it to twice a week with a lot of participation. Cherry yoga, again, has been very successful, and we pay about three to three-fifty a month for that to the instructor. And we would like to have like an advocate to report on the, on the activities of the seniors, maybe about orderly to, or instead of having just a senior citizen's feet. And when time comes for the actual planning of the new community center, we would like to be invited to the conversation to ensure our seniors are considered. That's all I.
Thank you for going to you.
Thank you very much, David.
I'll be quiet. Everyone, the county that developed us, I was looking at Solon's water infrastructure, the whole state's looking at good water infrastructure. For their, both parts. We're hearing a lot of things around town that Solon, even that Solon has become a regional water supplier, but developments for us to town, and that we don't really have a choice, except the twenty-eighty agreement with Gallery Acres only lets us say no to hook up requests. And this is the language from the, the agreement. Additional connections will only be allowed if the city deems there is sufficient treatment and supply capacity to adequately serve the project. So there's no language that lets us simply say no. And this is a question. We're in a new place now, but we've learned we've got to find that water supply. And we want to begin conducting ourselves accordingly, so we protect our water for Solon's future. We don't know how much water we have. We appreciate our city attorney tonight and something in the paper, in a very simple, straightforward way, to explain to the community what is our legal situation with this twenty-eighty agreement, and the only chance that we have to say no is to have a, a supply or treatment issue. And is it correct to assume that eventually we're gonna be hooking up a lot of these developments for us to town? Because we have no real way of ending it. Every time we have to review an applicant, it involves the attorney, the city engineer, the council, public monies, and time. And this is an issue now with the water result that we got from the study, finite resource. We are conducting ourselves differently. We look at our water differently. We don't know how much that there is. And so we have to start cutting back on anything that's not related to Solon or Solon's benefit. So we appreciate from the city attorney an explanation of what that twenty-eighty agreement means in terms of our obligation to hook people up. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. That takes us to item number seven, the consent agenda. So this would be the approval of the minutes from the October first, twenty twenty-five meeting, of bills, pressures, reports, and transfers, and building permits, which we had quite a few of those that Suzie sent out to us.
All right, so I just need to ask that the, the building permits to be.
If you wanna have a motion to approve A through C, and then we'll do another motion to approve D.
I'll move to approve motion A through C.
I'll find. Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item D, the building permits?
I will move to approve Consent Agenda Item D, building permits.
Second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
I'm staying due to conflict.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
All right, takes us to item eight, the Public Works Director Report. Now, David, Chris, you want us to kick it off?
We can start. Been a fun couple of weeks at the water and wastewater plant. This week, we moved sludge, so that's done for the season. And everything's winterized and ready for the weather to come. We're continuing work on the land service line report. We have a deadline again in November for that, so we're work, continuing working on that. We rounded up all the parts for the water meter system, the reading system that's gonna go on the tower, so hopefully soon that'll be up and running. And with the cold weather, I've been running everywhere I go, I mean, the heaters are running and so I have, I don't get caught off guard with the heater that doesn't work when it finally goes get cold, so. Pretty much how I spent my last helping time.
Chris?
Public Works Crew, playing at Seven Trees this week. Two at the New City Hall and five more down at Randall. Think we're done planting tree? Well, we got one more, but then we're done for the end. We pick up, it started. Both Matt Ross and Brady Robertson, those boys got their video permits, so they'll be getting seat time behind the wheel, so they can work towards getting their permanent video license. Get a little marine project down through our plant, added more capacity and just cleaned up the area, so better use of the space. And working on some fall projects preparing for the season that follows this one. I won't say the word.
So as long as the snow falls Monday through Friday, seven to three, seven to four, when you, uh, week pickup, is there a specific day?
Uh, we do it Mondays.
Mondays?
Every week, starting on Monday. Unless there's an emergency in the first system.
All right, thank you. Amy, anything you wanna add to?
I just wanted to add that trees, we got an unexpected grant from Trees Forever that gave us approximately a thousand dollars, so we gotta add some trees to our, to our, to our forests this year, so we're appreciative, very appreciative of that, so.
Thanks for all of your. Item nine, City Engineer Report, Dave?
Yeah, not much going on in the way of construction right now, but yeah, we're signing up for applications and other inquiries, helping carry out with those. Updating the floodplain ordinance, and then looking into equipment that we had to review that Webtech with the guys. Met, met up with a few vendors, and they have things that they wanted to take a look at, so we're checking with them, I thought you were saying, saying not to work with the wastewater plant upgrades. So that's our activity. This time.
Excellent. Kevin? Takes us down to public hearing, so it's a public hearing for capital equipment leases between the city of Solon and Cat Financial, their wheel loader and a track loader. You have a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Right. Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Kami, do you want to make this?
I will, so because this is a lease, the five years, we're required to give public notice, which we've done. We've given the public notice in the local newspaper. We're also required to hold a public hearing, which is what this is right now. Basically, these two leases are one for the nine, nine-ten wheel loader and the, and the track loader. This will be our third lease for the, for the wheel loader. We switched from purchase to lease some years ago because by the time we would get a loader paid off, it was just getting into maintenance issues. And then we were getting into safety issues, so we switched from purchase to a lease format so that we could kind of stay ahead of having safe and equipment that was good working condition for, for Public Works Department. And then switched to that format again for the track loader. We didn't have a track loader, but then when we added the track loader, we stayed with that lease format. These are five-year leases, so we're making, we make monthly payments. There is a, a trade-in allowance at the end of that five years. And then we get a guaranteed price back, so we know what we're gonna, we know what we're facing at the end of that five years. So that's the, and then we go into a contract with Cat Financial for these, for these leases. The equipment themselves, I would ask Chris to kind of talk about, you know, the importance of these pieces of equipment to our operations.
As Amy said, five-year leases work great for us because it ensures that our footprint stays in very modern condition. We did upsize our wheel loaders a little bit. Town's growing the things we're doing, we know larger units, so we did upgrade that a little bit for the next size of the frame board. Pretty much the same size.
Well, it seems like between all the work and some of the tasks that you guys can do in-house, as well as the snow removals, getting the track loader out, everything like that, loading up the snow on Main Street with the wheel loaders, definitely looks like it's much needed and well-used.
It's used a lot.
Aside from what present tonight, are any concerns that you guys have?
I think we're in good shape.
Any questions from council? Question or comment from both two?
I have a curiosity question. What is the monthly payment?
So around eleven hundred, there's the first payment and the last payment are larger, but the monthly payment is around eleven, it's eleven hundred dollars.
No, the track loader is a little less, and then I think the, I don't have the amortization schedules in front of me, but the right now, they're each about eight hundred, so that little loader's gonna go up to around a thousand.
Okay, maybe that's what I, I was looking at the wheel loader.
So is that eighteen hundred? Did I do the math right? Yep. According to your sheets, you've got two thousand seventy-one for the one and one thousand one hundred nineteen. Well, they have to, they haven't given me, they won't give us the amortization schedules until we file this, so I'll, I'll confirm that.
We can, once that's, we can get that to you. Any other questions or comments from those two? I will do the public hearing.
Second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us into new business. Item eight, we have resolution number twenty-five thirty-eight, the cat wheel loader lease. Kami, is there any other discussion moved on?
I don't, no.
I'll move to approve Resle, Resolution twenty-five thirty-eight.
So Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Item fourteen, Resolution twenty-five thirty-nine, the cat track loader lease. Any additional comment?
I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-five thirty-nine.
Right. Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Just to item fifteen, McBride Point application for city water?
Yep. Yep, so what you have in your packet is the application that we received from McBride Point. This application was actually submitted in two thousand and twenty-two. However, there was a and, and was reviewed by the utilities committee periodically. At the time of the application, we were barely, Gallery Acres, I'm not even sure, were actually live yet. And there was definitely a time period that needed to pass before both the utilities committee and city staff were even interested in discussing whether this was a good time for another development to hook on. The consensus by the committee was there just needed to be a period of time that passed. Let's see how the Gallery Acres connection was working, what was going well, what wasn't, was there any concerns with that? Then shortly after that, we received, or we had a well, we had a well malfunctioned, a well for, that was down for a period of months. So then we had several months where we were operating with one less well, and it was also a drought season. So again, there was just time that needed to pass before there was a consensus to even discuss moving the application forward. And so those conversations started last year. We had some preliminary internal staff meetings with their engineer and began the conversation of, okay, is this the time to move the, the application forward? And so that's what's brought us here to this point. And the application, as you'll see, is for twenty-six connections. And we completed the Q and A to provide that public information to both the council and the community, reflecting, you know, the, any questions that may arise about this application. My primary point of contact has been kind of scoping. And, and then, of course, Dave's been working with the engineer throughout when we've had questions or just general discussions. So what, what is being asked of the council tonight is to accept this application. By accepting this application, that will then direct Dave Shackinger to do that next level of research that needs to be done, so he can evaluate our storage and our current water, our current water supply and storage to evaluate whether there's a, an impact on our current water operations. Dave can speak on that a little bit, that is gonna take a certain amount of time. Then when we get to that point, that that information will come back, and the council will make a formal vote. It will follow the same format as, if there's a vote to proceed, then there would need to be an agreement drafted by our city attorney and the same, basically, procedural process and paperwork that flowed with Gallery Acres back in two thousand and eighteen, so. Dave, you want to speak a little bit about what's gonna inspire if the council accepts that application tonight?
Sure, so what we typically do on these, you know, being on like this for a year to five years of records, that will include the last few years that Gallery Acres connected to us, we'll pay, take a little attention to those. Take a look at how we operate. What we're trying to catch is a, a average year, and then also a pretty dry year. So that's why they like to go back five years. We're looking at that. We're looking at how the, the system operates as far as a per person. We'll project that forward for the, the heavy usage period, dry year, and then we'll also look at current. We want to take a look at how Gallery Acres is operating that system, how often they have to flush, how much they flush to need water quality, because there's a long line. So we'll need to talk with their certified operator. We need to evaluate the well drawdowns, so during certain periods of heavy pumping, the well operates at a lower level, of course, from the pump, and to figure out how we're doing on each one of the wells. With well on the service, we'll look at that period, and we've had well three down for a bit, we also had well four down, person errors. We gotta look at how they'll operate under stress. We want to get a good look at the system to make sure to understand how that's functioning and what the impacts are under different scenarios. So if we get into one of those and we are allowing them to connect and use more water, how will that impact the system? So it's more than what we typically look at, which is just how much storage do we have, how much well pumping do we have? We want to take a very in-depth look at it and, and see how the system operates under higher usage periods, so that we can give good advice. And you can make a good decision based off of that information. We've already started to gather some of the monthly operating reports. Dave's given those to me. So it's just a matter of getting the approval to start looking into that. But it will take a couple of months to go through and gather all that information, talk to the appropriate entities and give that information detailed, so we can provide a format that you can understand.
On data, with, I know going back to the five years, we'll try to catch a dry year with that. Do you feel, then, if it's without looking at the data, it's totally fine, but do you feel like we've had a dry year since Gallery Acres has been hooked up and online with us, that that would help reflect that?
Yeah, I would even say at the beginning of this year, there was a lot of stress on systems. I've, I've talked to several different water systems, they were asking about working out additional wells or making improvements to wells because they were getting some additional drawing down from what they expected. So I would say the beginning of this year is a pretty good indicator. It's going to be our most recent, it's going to have the, the most population that we've had at any point because of the development, and it also has Gallery Acres on there, so the beginning of this year should be a good indication, but as we look back at past two, what I'm looking for is the use of the population. So that if it was heavier than a past period, we could take what we're looking at now and increase a little bit to account for that, because we see some provision on higher usage in the past. So that's what we're trying to capture is not just what it looks like each year, but also what, what could it be in a worst-case situation?
Would you have other questions for the same of your day?
Just a general comment. I plan on supporting the application with the understanding that if it has any data impact right to water, water, Solon's ability to provide water to its internal residents, I will not vote for the eventual approve the application when it eventually comes back. I want to thank Dave for the, we've been going together, all the, all the available information to allow us to come to an informed decision, but as far as I'm concerned, no outside community has anybody to Solon's water from the get-go, but considering it's already hooked up adjacent to Gallery Acres, and it helps address a flushing issue that already exists, I'm going to, we skip the data to report, maybe the part of the back.
A question to come to, I agree with what you said. Lauren, do you have any?
No, no, I don't. I appreciate the information. I understand what we're doing.
I know we have folks from McBride Point here tonight with the application, any comments or questions that you have on next steps of the process?
We just appreciate all the time everyone's put in with this. We wouldn't be doing this if we had.
All right, so with that, do we have a motion for the application of McBride Point for city water?
I'll move to approve the acceptance of the application from McBride Point for city water.
Second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item sixteen, the software contract. Kim?
Yep, so we have in the packet, we have a contract for a new software program for the city of Solon. We've been on our current program since two thousand and eighteen, and it is being retired. And so they let us know earlier this year, and I mentioned it during budget time, that we were going to be facing some some rising costs in the industry across Iowa. There's a lot of, there's a lot of activity in the software program, city management software program. The application, or the quote before you is from Tyler Tech. Tyler Tech is unfolding a program called ERP Pro Ten, and this program is a more robust system. As we, the Fund Balance Program that we were previously with, with Tyler was geared toward a smaller city, so we were able to convert in two thousand Was geared toward a smaller city, so we were able to um convert in two thousand and eighteen to a program sized for a smaller city. Um we are no longer kind of in that smaller city um criteria. So we have um, we've looked at several of the options out there. And my recommendation is that we stay with Tyler Tech. Um I've outlined the uh annual fee, we're going from about nine thousand dollars. Uh per year to about twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Um, which sounds like a lot, and it is, but there's a lot of other programs out there that are a lot more. And cities are facing a lot higher costs than that. We're fortunate that because of our long-term relationship, they're giving us a pretty significant discount. Um, when I talk about a robust system. Um this program allows us to eliminate a current third-party merchant that we're currently using for credit cards. So uh Fund Balance doesn't support um um and a merchant within. The system, the system will, so rather than needing a third-party merchant for our credit card payments, both online and um in person. That is rolled into this quote. Um that's why there's two quotes, the second quote kind of encompasses that online order bill payments as well as the um, the credit card. Uh payments that we take in person or over the phone, so we're eliminating those fees um. Uh that are rolled into here, so for convenience, that's great for, that's great for uh us who um work all the numbers, but also um. We're gonna have the ability to take additional payments online, not just water bills. Cause right now we can only take water bills online, and so this does open up the opportunities for residents to have more flexibility. Um. I did, I did, I narrowed it down to two companies, um did full program and review of both. And um while the company does, other company did have some savings, they were based out of New Jersey. They were new to Iowa and I didn't feel that we wanted to be their test. Uh on Iowa software. Uh we've have uh a relationship and we've been through a conversion with Tyler, so I have confidence. And not just for program, but I have confidence in their transit conversion process. Also, they are going to, while they're a national company, they are, have a uh um, a um. Um, a team that's just focused on uh Iowa and Missouri. So we're gonna have people who know Iowa system and these systems are built to help us better. Uh create all the state reports that we have to do as a city. Um, so what would it look like? So upon approval of the quote, we would be signed a program manager. The program manager works with us to figure out a timeline, an implementation timeline, um how that data. Uh they'll convert, um they'll convert our current data and then we'll figure out a timeline, how to go live on the various modules. They've told us that um. Uh so Fund Balance in the life is December twenty-six, so they said we'd be up roughly third, fourth quarter. What, Mary? Um, I just. It's tough, this is, this is tough because it it's um. It's gonna, it's gonna impact, obviously, the budget, um the conversion fees are close to sixty thousand dollars. We'll pay those as we're billed. So it's, it's not we, that we have to come up with a lump sum of money. Um but the sixty thousand dollar conversion fee is an estimate for the hours that they estimate they're gonna need to uh help with the conversion. Uh build as their, build as we go. Um how are we gonna pay for this? Great question. Well, we have already abandoned anticipating this because we knew it was coming in January when we were talking. Cause I mentioned it and said we, we, we don't know what the end result's gonna be, but um I had bumped up the budget. Um I didn't bunch, bu- bump it up quite this much, but because I didn't know, I think I bumped it up twenty-five thousand dollars, so we still need to try to figure out where our conversion. Um expenses are going to come from, but I'm also in the process of closing the fiscal year. And I'm confident that there may be some, a little surplus that could help cover that. The issue is, we need to commit so we can get on their timeline. Um, and I'm not, I don't feel there's gonna be another program that's gonna serve us any better than this one.
Kimmy, if this, the conversion is gonna happen or to go live would be December of twenty-six. And if we're paying as we go, is there potential that some of this funding we could build into our fiscal twenty-seven? Budget with that? So it's nice, we have some cushion in there already, but it's, we may not have to find it all this fiscal year.
Might not, yeah.
This is um painful, but I think it's really important for us to have a strong. Web presence where people can find information, I think this is a really good investment for us, so. I don't love the money, but I think it's very important for us to make sure we have that stuff available to residents. And, you know, um. Match the what, the quality of our government, right? We want everything to be available, so.
I'm excited that, you know, people will be able to pay for services online whenever they're available, not necessarily when our offices are open or have to drop off checks, I think that would be good. And if it assists with reporting regarding state deadlines, if that ends up being a time saver for Hyper Kami or some, that would be very welcome. Because I know how hard they market if there's a major upstream running back, that would be good. Again, not enthusiastic about the price tag, but I think it would be a worthwhile investment and something we're gonna have to do, so.
Is it something as we look at, if you buy tickets to a concert online versus at the bonds office, there's some type of fee if you pay with a card versus cash at a restaurant, there's. A cash discount that's applied, is that something where that we look at? Also, so there, that convenience factor is passed to those that are taking advantage of the convenience versus passing on any expenses to all?
So we somewhat do that now, we absorb part of the credit card fees now. Um except for on the online payments, so we're already absorbing those. Um in their system, the, it's an all or nothing, we absorb, either absorb all of those payments or none of those payment or credit card costs, so. I will um, I'll talk, I will see what other flexibility, so. In 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 what I mean by that, if you're gonna pay for uh a dog license online. You're still gonna pay the convenience, the credit card fee, so either would, or you're gonna play, pay a five thousand dollar building permit, you're gonna pay the fee. There, there's, there's, there's only an all or nothing, so we can't say no fee on dog license, but yes, a fee on, on building permits. So I'll see what, I'll, I'll get an idea, and if we did this um the last time we went through the conversion, because we needed to decide. Where are we gonna pass that convenience fee on or are we gonna absorb it? And so we'll have to look at the range of our bit, of our um. Of our water bills, which we have, because we've been working on the, the other project with the wastewater treatment plant, and figure out what's a range of our water bills. And what would that fee be in, is the city law in terms of that?
Any other questions? That's, uh, do we have a motion for the software contract?
I will move to approve the.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Three.
Yes.
Takes us down to other business, council committees, any?
I've been fast on committees, I think we talked about all the committees in person, I feel like, or and or a lot lately, so I've been fast on that today.
Alright, item eighteen, uh city court report, Susan? Uh item nineteen, city administrator comments?
We wanted to um remind everyone um that um voting is on November fourth. And we won't have another council meeting before that. Um, also, and uh. Uh there is no P and Z meeting. This month, we didn't have any items submitted. Um we're already talking about the treaty grant, um. And uh wanted to thank, oh, you guys on this?
Yeah, I mentioned earlier, uh Ryan Empley. You guys know, it's Kirby got her project in Iowa, timed up, and we did some patchwork. Uh Ryan did a good job on taking care of that, and then he also um took care of a playground equipment.
Oh, yes.
Now, him and Matt um took that on and did a really good job with limited instruction that came with it. I'll just follow my career later. They got turned for that because there was alternative language use, but they can say.
Well, looks good, yeah, I drove right, thanks for the reminder. Um and then um last thing, I want to thank uh Amy and Suzie who have um done outstanding job of just getting. Um things cleaned up here at City Hall, so get ready to market this building and for shifting gears, we're moving next door later this week and we're gonna, we're gonna get that right now, so.
Alright, cool. That takes item twenty, council coming?
Just want to remind people that I'm voting on November fourth, but also early voting, I believe, but what do you say?
Yes, it started today.
Yeah, it did, yeah, um so. Uh check out your voting locations, uh Johnson, uh the. The county building downtown, our city is a common one. Um but if you want to go that round, just know it's available. Uh that, I just want to thank senior groups for meeting with me over the last couple of months and getting to know the great services they provide someone.
You have a council?
Uh I just want to say, I just want to say uh best of luck to all the candidates, uh the location is the library, you said, right? It's not here this time?
Yes.
Okay.
But make sure, because some of the newer developments actually will vote in their township, so.
Okay.
There's a link on the auditor's website, it's also on our website, you can type in your address and make sure.
Right, you're very smart.
But the majority of in-city is library.
Okay. And then I got a text message from a representative out at McBride Estates, and he just asked if I could read this real quick. Uh he said I'd, uh Chad Gertis is his name, he said I've confirmed with our past and current board members, McBride Estates has never, nor are there any plans to um. To enter into a contract to acquire any water from any other entities, including Solon. Additionally, we recently spent a significant amount of money upgrading our water system to ensure our water will continue to meet. All Iowa requirements in the upcoming years, we did have access points added uh as last option, but uh have no intention of seeing those.
What, nah, that would, Mayor comments? I was, the voting, it's been one I was gonna hit, you guys have that? Uh the only other thing is, we do have the candidate forum uh on Monday down in library, April five, and it's. Uh I believe six thirty, maybe the time that we have on that, so I'll see. Oh, six. We update my calendar on that. Uh, I don't have anything other than that, that, uh do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All favors down?
Fine.